We call the public meeting, special meeting of the town council, public hearing, special meeting in town council to order for Wednesday, October 25th, 2017, at the North Branford Auditorium at 7:07 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to our mother, which stands one nation, under God, and that this is the legal and justice of all.
Go.
Mayor Judy? Sorry. Mayor Judy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Here.
Councilor Angelina Lee? Yeah. Yeah. Councilor Arman?
Here.
Councilor Candelora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Mace?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
How are you?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
If we could just have a moment of silence in honor of Alan Davis, the principal at the North Branford Intermediated School that passed away.
Oh, I can't hear how Dave has passed away.
Okay, now we'll move into discussion, potential future of 1599 Foxon Road. If any citizen wants to make a statement.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Mike Paulus, Town Manager, and I just want to explain what you're seeing up there, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'd like to thank Steve Torino for bringing this footage that he filmed of the site to try and orient you prior to the meeting. This is a look at the main parcel right there between 139 and Notch Hill Road, and he has various angles and also from the ground level all the way up to, I think, 1,300 feet. But he also was able to get around the parcel to the backside, and you'll see that in the footage to the, what we call the old trolley line, which is back after you see where the old Wallfield piece is right here. He was able to get in to look at the, right down to where the abutment of a bridge used to be for the trolley line. And these pictures here are helpful to give you a sense that there is a bit of a hill there in terms of elevation where the back building used to be, the old schoolhouse, town hall. And also, I think you saw a brief, well, there it is, the basketball court remains on the site, but other than that, the two buildings have been removed and the ball field has been removed as well. This is overall a 5.95 acre site, and it is currently, you know, as I stated, you all know where the location is, between 139 and fronts Route 80, but it is Zone B2 in the Towns District. This is the trolley line, shot of the trolley line, and I think he spans all the way around to you, a quick shot of the abutment at some point in here. But there is a steep drop-off on the backside, and there it is right there with the graffiti, but that is really overgrown, the actual bed is almost unrecognizable, but it is there, and much overgrown as you can see from the footage, but it is part of the parcel that runs all the way out to Notch Hill. And again, this is aerial footage from a drone, also gives some very, very nice shots of our town as well. So I just wanted to handle that introduction, we've been playing for you for the beginning, but then, again, this helps orient you to the site that you can see. But here tonight, the council was looking for the opportunity to invite the public in to really answer the threshold question, should this site be developed or should it remain as open space, and that's why we're all here tonight, so that we can hear from you. There is a sign-up sheet. We have started, and I will try and facilitate in calling the names so that we can get through. Some of you may not want to speak, you can certainly send a written comment if you want. I have received almost a dozen written comments from residents that couldn't be here tonight. So anybody who's shy, doesn't want to come up to the mic, if you want to write, just hit the website and my email's there and you can send in your comments. So with that, I think we're, if the council's ready, we're ready to go. I think Steve, if, or Steve, actually, that could probably, if nobody minds, I can probably just play in the background if that's all right. I don't think that'll disturb anyone. Thank you, Steve. First speaker is Art Kaplan.
Thank you. Before I give a presentation, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to congratulate the Public Works Department for what they did this afternoon coming up Route 80 in front of the fire department. There were two cars involved, and there was one gentleman laying on the ground, and I do believe it was a member of the Public Works Department who pulled up, jumped out of his truck, ran over and started doing compressions on this gentleman, and continued feverishly, because he kept on wiping his forehead, I guess he was nervous, but he kept doing the compressions until the gentleman visually could be seen breathing again, and the fire department was there within a matter of minutes. So I really would like to, you know, congratulate the Department of Public Works and the fire department and the police department for attending this scenario this afternoon on Route 80. My name is Art Kaplan, I live at 1-5 Dogwood Road, off of Seahill Road. Inland use planning or urban open spaces, open space, that ranges from parks, playing fields, to highly maintained environment areas.
Sir, can we interrupt you?
Yes.
We can't, I think, we can't understand what you're saying.
We'd be better off with no sound system.
Yeah.
Am I talking too loud?
Can you guys hear out there?
Yeah, it amplifies really well off the stage, so.
I can talk without.
What if we all just talk?
If you just talk, if you just talk.
All right, sure.
Without shutting off, or can they do something to make it so we can hear?
All right. Inland, inland use planning, is that better? Inland use planning or urban open space is open space that ranges from parks, playing fields, to highly maintained environment areas, to relatively natural landscapes. Open space is any open space of land that is underdeveloped, meaning no buildings or structures exist, and is accessible to the public. Examples that might be considered would include town squares, parks, marketplaces, public commons, public greens, and areas for locals to picnic and concerts. The appropriate consideration for the open space located at 1599 Foxon Road would enhance the character of the town, promote community integrity, and provide a calming setting as well as for visual and aesthetic enjoyment. Parks, not recreational playgrounds, of which the town has an abundance strategically located, provide intrinsic environmental and aesthetic benefits to communities as well as a source of positive economic development. A well-maintained park enhances property values, possibly increasing municipal revenue, bringing in new home buyers, entice business entrepreneurs, and attract senior citizens. Let's ask ourselves why are parks important? Some here in attendance might say we have many parks in North Branford, but do we? The answer is no, but we do have several athletic fields and playgrounds. Many of our childhood memories happen in parks. Parks are a crucial part of any community. They have a significant impact on the development of children and the happiness of everyone in the community. Parks provide for neighborhood residents to interact with each other and meet new people and make new friends. Parks are great places for events such as community tag sales, concerts, memorial recognition, and for people to just engage socially. All this needs planning, community involvement, and will take time to establish a true use for this property. My intent here is not to sound philosophic advocating for nature, but to initiate discussions for consideration for this open space to host the congregating of our townspeople where people can make new connections, make new friends in a calming environment, and rather than commercializing this area, a park would contribute to relieving the daily stressful and mental deterioration we face daily. A study by Finnish researchers in Helsinki, Finland, found that even 10 minutes in a park or a wooded environment could tangibly reduce stress, and that participants in this study felt most restored after time spent in a woodland setting than in a commercialized or industrialized environment. How many of us would prefer a more calming environment? I'm sure many here would agree, we can all use some reduction of mental stress. Compare the calmness and aesthetic appearance of a park, where seniors can congregate, new mothers can stroll with their babies, and other moms, and even some health enthusiasts can take advantage of mental cleansing and soothing environment with a brisk walk. So enough of my calming efforts to suggest a park, rather than selling this property to a developer for the development of another mini mall, housing, et cetera. We have five strip malls along Route 80 from the Guilford Line to Route 22, three of which lack tenants by 50%, allowing these shopping strip owners to make money by not renting the space affordably but as tax write-offs. The idea of selling this property only to have a developer suggest previously mentioned options, or even worse, a 10,000, 15,000 square foot drugstore at this location would just be another eyesore and would only depreciate possibly the only property existing that can enhance this area of town. The town has appropriated an area for townspeople to allow their dogs to run freely. I travel this area often and have not seen this area to be of any use by the absence of those who have contributed to its foundings. My comments do not reflect negatively about this project, but if it was decided to approve this playground for our four-legged family members, then let's beautify our town by providing an area for our townspeople to be proud of. I suggest the town council consider keeping this property as town-owned and be open to suggestions of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Pantani. Sorry.
My name is Moya Pantani. I live at 57 Notch Hill Road. I also have property at 28 Branford Road in North Branford. At one time, I was the most, one of the most highest residential taxpayers in North Branford. Thank God that I'm not now, but thanks to Mr. Rose, who both built us some houses on the top of Seahill. Now and again, we are faced with the increase of taxes. If the Connecticut budget does not pass giving aid to towns, where or where are we going to get the monies for development or anything else in North Branford when we have to provide 5.5 million for the school system? I have been a teacher since 1957, I retired in 2004, so I have nothing against the educational, I'm not biased at all about education. How are families expected to find the extra money to fend off the expected increases? And development is not going to give us another park or an open space. Perhaps we should try to make an area of multi-use. Perhaps a business or residential like Branford Green, they have shops, they have residential, and most residential over Branford Green, if you ever look, doesn't have too many families with children. Children cost quite a bit to educate, believe me, I've done public school and private, so I know. Try taking, try sending your children to choke. With the looming increases due to a poor forwarding thinking, poor forward thinking, I feel that many families will decide to leave the town. I for one are among them. Forty years of more taxes every year is not acceptable anymore. I cannot get more money from my retirement and/or my social security. With rumors about the town now abounding about we need a new high school, huh, plus a 10% reduction in the students in North Branford, is it possible that even to think that in the future politicians of North Branford should start to seriously think about putting the brakes on and the more spending, and more spending? They have been doing this for years. It's not just Republican or Democrat, it seems that something in North Branford says, oh, we need this, so we have to spend more. Generate tax income property for the sake of the citizens and the towns as a whole. We don't need another dog park, we have a dog park. We don't need another park, we have North Farms and other parks are there, and we also have recreational areas in the town itself, plus Northford and North Branford, we have the tax there. What we need is some type of base of an income, income. What are you going to do about parking on the 5-point whatever acres of land? You have to think about that, you have to think about all the other ramifications. We are very lucky at this moment to have a volunteer fire brigade, I don't care whether you call it, whatever, anyway, but we are very lucky. Put that onto the taxes. We have the police, we pay taxes, we have public works, we pay taxes. Now, if you think that by increasing the North Branford citizenship, we're going to have to have maybe a paid fire, and that is very, very hard to swallow. I think we pay enough, I think taxes are high in North Branford, I've never really been outspoken about it, but I feel myself having five acres over on 139 as well, the taxes are quite considerable. And I think that we should seriously think about using the property for both a little town square. We don't have it, Branford has a green, Guilford has a green, everybody has a green in Connecticut, except North Branford, I don't know any other towns, but North Branford does not have a green, and maybe we should think about a green. We don't need $10,000 more going out on a child, or 7.00% more going out on this, that, and the other in a tax increase. We're watching now in Connecticut being bankrupt pretty soon, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I've lived in this town for almost 81 years. I was born in a town, I went to the old center school, I played on this field as a school kid, and even after I was through the school, older, we played on that field. A lot of generations of kids have played on that field, and I think it's ridiculous that we're back, this is the third meeting on this issue I've attended in the last two or three years, and we're back again debating whether we should sell it or not. This piece of land should not be sold, it should be kept, open space down the road, it's big enough that it could be changed and jockeyed around a little bit to make ball fields or something down the road. You don't have to do it now, you don't have the money for it now, but it's the last piece of parkland we have in proper North Branford. Everything else is in the other, in the borough of North, or up that end of town, and I think we should keep this for North Branford. It's located to the old trolley line, it's come by, I don't know what the situation is on that, but I look at that trolley line, and it could become a bike path, it could be access through the town for walking people, bicycles, or whatever, and it would be right onto the field and get them off Route 80. There's a lot of possibilities for this land, and I don't want to see it sold, I don't think it should be sold, and I hope this is going to put an end to it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Quirfeld, I haven't lived in town quite as long as Mr. Harrison, but I want to piggyback on what he said. Starting with, you know, years ago, the town had a vision, and they decided that they wanted to keep Northford rural and scenic and pristine, and in keeping Northford rural and scenic and pristine, they insisted on putting in small sewer lines to prevent development, et cetera. Now, part of their vision was to build up Route 80, which they have done successfully. The only remaining piece of, I'll call it pretty property, green area, open space, is what we're talking about right now in the center. And I would like to see a green area, you don't have to do it right away, just save the property, but down the road, a nice lawn, gazebo, some sidewalks, so that the elderly could walk up from the senior housing, because many of them don't drive anymore, so the young mothers at Marshfield Apartments could bring their babies, the people from North Farms could walk and enjoy the park. It's much different than a ball field, or a soccer field, or a dog park, it's a place where the community could hold important ceremonies, we could even think of moving our war monuments from what is left of the Congregational Green to this, and make it nice. And I've done some research, I don't know if you're familiar with the Blue Zones, a National Geographic writer, Dan Butner, he has his third book coming out on the Blue Zones, and this is on happiness, and in a recent interview, he stated, "In the United States, the happiest places tend to be the places where enlightened leaders," that's you, "over the past century decided to shift their focus away from just economic development and growth, and put it on the quality of life." And they've made policies and emphasized a better life for all of their citizens. And I'm just asking you not to be penny wise and town foolish. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jack McCoy.
Yes, my name is Jack McCoy, I'm at 28 Basswood Drive, North Branford. Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Harrison made compelling stories. My kids played baseball at Wallfield. I've also observed since the recession, our property value is stabilizing. So on the one hand, my mind says, I'm nostalgic, but I'm also Yankee pragmatic. We need tax money to pay for our schools, power our roads, I like those things as well as having an open space. Fortunately, our town has a lot of open spaces, we have great ball fields kids play on, there are dog parks, as noted. We're a pretty balanced community, so you have the quandary of what do we do here? Well, not developing this kind of sets a tone for the future, and whether it's good or bad, that depends on how people feel about this, there is still a lot of farmland and other land that will come up and change over time. Are we going to make those parks, non-tax-based parks, or are we going to see the community develop in a controlled, kind of planned environment like we saw in the planning that was described two years ago? In my mind, I'd like to see the board, the council, adopt that mindset, that we have to see our properties develop, see our tax base stabilized, be able to pay for the things we want and the services we need, and I think this is probably one of those first steps in changing that. It's a small property, but it's a mindset change, and I'd advocate to do the development as described. Thank you.
If the council could be here as well as we can, speak to us and hear what you've said. Can you hear it? Sorry, the mic, just make sure. Yeah, the mic works fine, it just projects, I think, for the auditorium and hard for the council to hear. And can you hear that when they? Yeah. Okay. It's a lot better than it was before. Next speaker, Andrew Constantinople.
I've always been told I'm loud, so I don't know if I need the microphone or not, but. I grew up in North Branford, and as has my father, and like gentlemen here before said, I played at Wallfield, my father played baseball at Wallfield.
Maybe you can put the mic down, because there you go.
Can you go better?
Can you guys hear him?
I can turn this way, like I said, I'm pretty loud, so. When I was growing up, we would come back to my grandmother's house, be a ballgame going on, my father would stop, we'd watch a few innings. I remember the old timer on the hill, he used to sit out there every day and watch the ballgame. The whole area's changed already with the development of Route 80, that old timer's house is long gone. I have children now, I have little ones in town. I was very, like, I'm sure a lot of people here were very sad to see Wallfield go. I was hoping my kids would play there like my father did, like I did. Now I look at that open space there, and I find that we could have something for families and children to play at. I pay the taxes in town, I have a 48 North Road Drive, and, you know, I'm family, and I feel every time the mill rate goes up, I don't like it either, but I don't see developing that into anything that will bring the mill rate down. I don't, what could be put there? Like a gentleman earlier stated, you drive up Route 80, all you see is empty store funds. There's a brand-new, looks like an industrial-style building on Totoka Road, I drove by it today, there's garages and everything, it says Ford East. We have plenty of things that could be developed already that are in place, where we don't have a substantial park. I have a two-year-old, not at schools in town, I have to drive to Branford to take her to a park, because I can't take her to Jerome Harrison, because the kids are there, which my daughter, my older daughter now attends. I understand that Economic Times today says you can't put a park in there, you can't put anything right now, but you could sit on the property, it's a beautiful piece of property, it could be developed. I like the idea about moving the monuments, that's a wonderful idea, so when the parade comes down, when it's in the North Branford side, everybody's not standing in Route 80. You have a hill that's already there, saw it in the short video you guys were showing, kids could flood right down that hill. I mean, it's, I was there today after all this rain, drainage looked good, there's already a parking lot, and the basketball court that I used to meet my friends at when I was a kid to play basketball on, it's still there, it does need a little TLC, but it's still there. It's a piece of property, it's a perfect setting, it's already, by the way, Route 80 was developed, secured from cars flying into the park in an accident of that sorts. So I hope that you guys, even if you can't afford to do anything with it today, would not try to sell it to a developer, which the way I see it would be the only person that would profit from it. The townspeople won't, it ain't going to adjust the mill rate, and maybe if you just leave it for future kids to play at, I mean, we ain't going to be able to play sports there anymore, but my kids could still play there, they could flood right down that hill that's a naturally perfectly hill where the building used to stand. So please, keep the land the way it is and work on the other buildings that already exist if you're looking for economic development. I think that would suit the town people a lot more better. Thank you.
I didn't get your name. Sir? I didn't get your name, you're going to say your name.
Oh, Andrew Constantinople.
Oh, thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Constantinople.
Bob Constantinople, 85 West Pond Road. Like my son said, I played the first year Wallfield was made, he played on that field. I was hoping to see my granddaughter play on that field, but it's not going to happen, it's gone. I do not see the center of our town, it looks like a dump, to be honest with you. Thank goodness they're finally fixing up the Bear's House, that place was an eyesore for a longest time. We have this property there, it could become a town green, it could be used for recreation, it belongs to us. What are we going to gain financially? How much is each household's taxes going to go down if we let somebody develop it? $10, $12 in taxes a year? I'm sure we all could afford that. We have so much empty buildings in town. You just had a program to have people like Rosa's Orchard develop things and get a tax break. The person who gave the tax break to on Totoka Road has now got a lease on the building. What happened? I mean, there's another empty building, it's not bringing jobs into town, it's not making the gas station guy get money for gas, right? We have this space, think about a town green or recreation for the kids in town, someplace for us to go to. Thank you.
Liz Kaplan.
Hello, Elizabeth Kaplan, 1936 Middletown Avenue, Northford. First thing I like to do is read a statement by someone that could not be here tonight, it's very brief, this is from Marcio Nofrio. It's very brief, this is from Marcio Nofrio. Dear Town Council, I'm unable to attend the hearing tonight, but just would like to state that I feel the property should be sold. We do not need a $2 million park. The proceeds from the sale could be put to good use in renovating the PD. Respectfully, Marcio Nofrio. O-N-O-F-R-I-O. Little joke, sorry. So I just, in being transparent, I am on economic development. I'm not speaking on behalf of economic development, we did not meet and vote me as a representative, so I am speaking as a private citizen that has some background knowledge and some knowledge of economic development in the community. But let me just digress. My son, too, played baseball on Wall Field. I was on the Friends of the Libraries a long time, we used to use the old Center School as a place in which we sorted our books prior to our library sale. I used the old Park and Rec Building years ago. I'm a proponent of open space, I love the 200 acres we have behind the police station that we use for the Poco and all the acreage behind there, I drive by there every day. And I have a horse outside at Century Farm, and I'm there day in and day out, so I'm outside a lot, I'm an outdoors person. However, with that being said, we are in a difficult, we are in difficult economic times, no doubt, and we do have empty storefronts, no doubt. And I will just say, the folks on the economic development, it's a great community, we are really working hard to, working with businesses and trying to do whatever the town can to engage with those businesses, but there are empty storefronts, I agree. And my feeling is, the selling of the property at $15.99, it is a marquee space, it is the corner, it is an excellent place to develop something in a very lovely aesthetic nature. Granted, we sell it, we don't have a lot of controls necessarily, but we can talk to a developer, we can talk to him about prior vision that has come through the Yale studies, and what they have shown us with what could be done. There can be open space on that property for walking trails and things like that. We need mixed use, I did speak with Dave Ambrose today, and basically what he informed me, at max use, at max use, this property will be valued at about $2.3 million. So with that being said, that would be about $50,000 worth of taxes the town would retain in revenue each year. Now let's say the developer decided to go with, and be applying for the tax abatement program over five years, and they got granted that, so year one, they would pay $10,000 in taxes, year two, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, and year five, up to $50,000. I'm sorry, I don't know about you, but $50,000 is nothing to sneeze at. And not only that, you know, we have Central Plaza, we know it's an out-of-state landowner, there's no doubt about that. What if this developer wanted to buy that property and have it be a sister property, and have a whole enclave of a beautiful development with the two properties? Maybe other property owners on Route 80 jump on the bandwagon and want to develop their properties, because they see how beautiful $15.99 could be. It's just, we have to think out of the box, we have to be able to take town property, we have over 777 acres of open space in this community owned by the town of North Branford. And I'm not saying that is a detriment or a bad thing in any way, I just think this is a golden opportunity, we have to be creative, we have to continuously seek ways to bring tax revenue into this community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe DiFrancesco.
Joe DiFrancesco, 43 Auger Road. Our farm has been in town since 1907, we've seen a lot. Okay. Joe DiFrancesco, 43 Auger Road, Northford. Better? Okay. Our farm's been in town since 1907, and we're going on like four generations in farming. We've been around for a long time, and we've seen a lot of things happening in town. Like the girl prior to me, we have a ton of open space in our town, we have over 200 acres right in the back of this, goes all the way from our farm all the way down to North Branford, plenty of space for open space. I don't know what the people are coming up with saying, the park, this sports complex where they have, they have this playing sports there. We're one of the best sports complexes in Totoka Valley right now, with all the different parks, it's like state of the art. And it's actually not just Northford, it's actually right in the center of Northford and North Branford, so it's actually both of us, not just Northford. So basically, we have plenty of beautiful fields for kids to play, and plenty of places for people to go to do different things. I don't know much about the parks in North Branford, I know there's a nice park on 139, there's a nice park on Middletown Avenue, there's plenty of parks that people can utilize very well. I agree with letting this parcel go for commercial property. The last time I went, when you had Yale down here, I thought we'd put a parcel together saying we're going to put a, tend to put a nice green there for people, have a green there for the town. We don't have a green in North Branford or any place in town, a green, some stores and some buildings upstairs for people to live and things like that. It would bring taxes to the town. I don't know about you guys, but I think, I think our taxes have gone up quite a bit in the last few years, and as long as everybody's very wealthy in town, I guess you do whatever you want, but we need, we need some revenue in our town. And we sort of, we sort of take away from just bringing commercial property in, we just don't do it. Other towns, Wallingford welcomes it, Branford welcomes it, somebody set up this property on Totoka Road, that's a brand new piece of property they just put up. And it's actually for lease, because when you put a brand new piece of property up, it's for lease, they're going to make money on that, basically, so it's for lease, and the town's going to make money out of it also, but just can't look at an empty building that was just put up and not having the last six months. So basically, it's for lease, and the town's making money, and the person who owns it's going to make money, so I don't know how you see a brand new building being empty. So I agree that the town should do something with property, and it would bring taxes to us, and I don't think we need any more open space or anything like that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bonnie Semansky.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Semansky, 50 West Pond Road. I've lived in North Branford for 24 years. I'm a retired library and media specialist, and I was, I formally served on the Board of Education, and I'm currently active in the library and the Land Conservation Trust, but I am speaking today as a concerned citizen regarding the property on Foxen Road. I strongly encourage the council to keep the Foxen Road property as open space in the center of town. As a community, we need to think about using the property in a way that would strengthen our economy, provide a better quality of life, and build on our local assets. This means planning where development should or should not go. The property on Foxen Road should remain open space until the time comes when there's a really good idea that would reflect the community's local character and personality. Now keeping the property as open space would reflect North Branford's local character and personality. This space could accommodate multiple users, maybe a farmer's market in the summer, but only after we've talked to the local farmers to make sure they were on board. This space could foster social interaction and create a greater sense of community, should include benches or gazebo for music. This space could create an interesting visual experience, people talked about the monuments. My husband remembers planting trees behind the old school that was raised. Wouldn't this be a great place for an outdoor student art show, or a sculpture showing, or maybe food trucks? As a community, we need to think about smart growth economic development. So what does this mean? It means a place where young people want to stay, a place where people want to hang out, and a place where we celebrate our history. I applaud the Economic Development Commission's map on the farms of North Branford. This is who we are. We are not Guilford, and shi-shi shops don't really work here. We don't need another pizza parlor, we see what's happening with one of them, or maybe another dollar store. There is enough housing in apartment developments. There is a development going on in the Mission area, 300-plus units, which will generate taxes. That's actually walking distance to this Foxen Road area. I think we have to think broader. There is a lot of empty space in this town which people have talked about. We should, where we develop, we should continue to develop. On 139 Commercial Drive, there's a vacant lot next to the Cumberland Farms, there's lots of other spaces to develop, and we don't need that prime space to develop. So I encourage the council to read the American Planning Association's guidelines of great public open spaces, because Foxen Road property could be a great public space if we gave it thought, dialogue, and ideas. A great public space would ultimately strengthen North Branford's economy, but until we do that groundwork, I strongly encourage the council to keep it as open space. Thank you.
Ma'am, that's the end of the list. It's open for anyone else?
Sir, can you come up to the platform a minute? Thank you.
Just a question. My name is Dan Easol, I live at 10 Lindsay Lake Road. The dozen letters that were received, I heard mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, will all the letters that are being received be published in some way?
They'll be part of the clerk has all the votes, they'll be part of the show.
And so how do the residents get those? How do the residents see those?
They're submitted to when they're published.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you. And that's still open for submissions, if people want to submit?
Yeah, you could send a letter, we'll accept that.
I'm going to give it another shot, and what I'm hearing from the majority of people that are in my corner, as far as saving that piece of land, you've got vacant stores, and so what are you going to do? You going to put some orphaned places down there that are going to be vacant probably? You going to add some kind of apartment housing? My God, you've got houses for sale all over town. So I don't understand your thinking. Keep it open space, and it's something that the town will have, and down the road, they might need it for recreation or other things. And you talk about all the parks we got in town, they're all on the other end of town. We got North Farms down there, that's a soccer field, it's got a little cabana right there, parking lot, yeah, it's got hiking trails down in the woods. That's the only other thing we've got east of the high school, and the fields over there. And everything else is north, it's not in this end of town. And why you going to take it, a piece of open space out of this end of town, so you can tap more money to peel away at some stupid thing, is beyond me. I'm sorry, I just don't buy it.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Hi, I'm Fran Beaumont, I'm from Forest Road, and I've been in this town for 77 years. And I feel in order to bring more businesses into town, we need to beautify the town. We are one of the only towns that does not have a center, a congregating place, a place where you can have the parades and do special events. This is, to me, the most important thing of that piece of property. We don't need any more condos, the police can't keep up with the work that has to be done with the condos that we have running back and forth, the fire department can't keep up with them. You just, I cannot envision more businesses. The businesses in town now are struggling to keep their head above water. Who's going to come in here? In order to make the town look more appealing, it seems to me that you'd like to have a nice center, build it up, and make it look pretty. That might encourage more businesses to come in and want to come in. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Parfitt, where I live is irrelevant to what I'm going to talk about. I'm a parishioner at Zion Episcopal Church, and I was asked to speak tonight. If that piece of property is developed and paved over, which is what happens when we develop places, it's likely to create a flooding situation at the Zion Episcopal Church, which you could see on the video is sort of adjacent, right next to the trolley tracks there, because the river runs right through. We have a memorial garden at the back, and there's concerns that that would flood if adequate drainage wasn't taken care of if the site was developed. Personally, I like to leave it as open space as well, that's just my own personal thing. Okay?
Thank you.
Ma'am, the person, can you come back up? I have a follow-up question to your statement. You just talked about, spoke about a town green.
Ms. Beaumont.
Fran Beaumont.
Ms. Beaumont.
Would you mind, could I just engage for a sec? My curious is, what is your vision of a town green? Because you spoke of a town green that could encourage business, what is your vision of a town?
Well, I'm, my, number one, I don't understand why we're even here. This is the third time this whole thing has come to a head. The last time, we spent hours working on drawing up plans, and the consensus was, I would say, probably 75% of the people wanted to keep that as a center. We wanted a center of town where people could congregate, where you could do, as someone else said, put walks in, have people be able to get back and forth. If you beautify your town, you're going to make it appealing to businesses. They don't need to be on that prime piece of property, they can be anywhere in town where there's property available. But the town needs to be appealing. I mean, let's face it, Route 80 is not appealing, it has not been since they widened it, it's nice because it's a nice wide road, but the state never really finished what they were supposed to do, and it's a mess. You need to make it appealing to bring in other people.
So then how do, then the struggle, I think, that the town faces is, that's all private property. So then what can the town do to beautify private property? I mean, we did have a facade program at one point, which was underutilized, and we should probably look at that again.
Well, I thought, at the last time, when we had one of these, they talked about selling it to a developer who would develop it as such. Of course, his ideas were to put condos in, which I don't think we need, and stores, high-end stores. We don't need high-end stores in North Branford, like I said, everybody's struggling to begin with. Maybe sometime in the future, we could have high-end stores, if the town looked more appealing. I mean, we have a beautiful town, we have beautiful, I drive down to 22 and just marvel at the fields, when they're all blooming with their corn and flowers and everything else. It's just beautiful. But, it's not beautiful to businesses that want to come in, unless you have some place where people could congregate, something to draw people in. Why we never had a center of town, I could never understand. I mean, the center of town at most times was considered where the congregational church was. And of course, when they widened Route 80, they took half that property away, so that's not even considered a center anymore, you can't even have anything there. We need something where people could congregate and get together, where it's open to the public, we don't need any more ball fields. I understand that the children have, they need to play, but, I mean, there's ball fields everywhere, you go up the Northford End of Town, there are ball fields, that's not a park, that's a ball field, all different kinds of sports events. And rightly so, I mean, the kids need sports, but we've got enough of those. We need something for the rest of the community.
Well, so then, you know, we have the Potato and Corn Festival at Auger Property on 22, which we underutilize that, I mean, I think we would agree, because we use it three days a year. So what do you suggest about that property?
Well, you see, that was, in the very original plan, that was part of it. They were going to put a nice gazebo up there, they were going to make a spot with benches and places where people could congregate, they were going to have music, you know... They were going to have music, you know, concerts and so forth. And then all of a sudden, that changed.
It just kind of faded away.
They even had plans all drawn up. They passed out plans to us. They had all kinds of things drawn up. And then that all just hushed, hushed, and it disappeared. So what I'm saying is, we have this piece of property here now. I mean, you've taken 90% of the property up there on Forest Road, is gone for other purposes. I mean, unless they want to save a big piece of that and use it primarily for that. But I don't see that as happening. That originally was supposed to be the center of town. They were supposed to move the libraries over there, congregate, you know, put the two libraries together. We would have saved a lot of money if they had followed that original plan instead of doing what they did. But, you know, each group that comes in has a different idea on how they want to do things. But I do feel very strongly about the center of town. I think it's, I think it's a selling point.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Rose, 40 Valley Road. And I came here tonight with a very open mind because I want to hear from my fellow citizens about their ideas. But I take exception with Dan Arman. So I'm going to suggest, as a counselor, if you want to weigh in as a public commenter and make your own comments, I don't know why you would interrogate someone who has come up with some ideas. So I'm just feeling very uncomfortable about that. I thought this was a time to hear public comment, not to interrogate our citizens. And I'm going to suggest perhaps you sign on and come if you'd like to state your own beliefs.
Oh, okay. Well, let me just say that I was just trying to understand her thoughts. I wasn't, those...
Cross that way to me, it seemed like makeup. And it's hoping you might get in my mind instead.
I guess we're done.
Okay. I'm really very excited based on the feelings of the people concerning the use of this property. I've been a strong advocate for beautification of the town. I've been living in town for 45 years, and there are things that I think obviously could be improved upon, the beautification. I see very little as far as enticing businesses and stop the home selling because there's so little that I think is being done. I have written to the governor on several occasions about the expressway, if you will, between 22 and Tocantamaso and what I call the Verzano Bridge. And there were, for the longest time, literally years, where there was debris. There were styrofoam containers. There were mattresses. There was garbage. There was, not too long ago, there was diapers from a healthcare facility in the center of Route 80 by Big Y. And I have been in touch with somebody in Town Hall who's been extremely helpful, and I think the person knows who it is. But I've called the governor on three occasions and the Department of Transportation about the debris and about the lawn, the grass growing and everything else. And it took not too long, but people traveling up Route 80 now, if you notice, there is a consistency in lawn care. There's a consistency of litter being picked up. And I think, you know, not only do we need the state to follow up on these issues, but, you know, if you look at other towns regarding their beautification programs, I look at Branford. Branford every year has the Women's Club, the Ladies Auxiliary, whoever the group is, they have those planters throughout the entire green. They have, they have concerts there. They have memorials there. And there are so many things that I think we could do in that property. If you look up at Route 80 in this area, which I live one mile from there, as I mentioned, there are several shopping centers there, and half of them are vacant. On the side roads there, there's vacant buildings, concrete buildings that are just dilapidated, backhoes, excavators, and it's just not appealing. There's nothing whatsoever that anybody would feel comfortable, you know, coming and moving into town. Madison has a wonderful beautification program, and I just think, as, I think the feeling of a lot of people here is that we really need to get a group together to meet and consider some means of beautifying the town rather than selling this property to a developer and have the potential of, again, as some people have envisioned, you know, stores and apartments and condominiums. I don't think we need that. I think, you know, the idea of having a green memorial, maybe a fountain, it's just something to consider. But move the memorial from, in front of the church over there. I just think the town needs a green. Consider a park, not a playground. We have plenty of playgrounds, but we don't have parks. On 139, there's a soccer field and a gazebo out there. There's little there that can attribute, or that can invite people to come into the area. So I just think, again, not to sound repetitive, but I just think it'd be better if the town council considered saving this property as open space and gathering a few people together with some good ideas and just beautify the town.
I don't know, but as I listen, may I suggest that this is not just North Branford. We are North Branford and Northford. What are you going to do for the Northford residents? You're going to beautify North Branford. Northford has a lot of farming and open spaces and everything else. You're talking about this as a whole town. We have two zip codes, but we are one town paying taxes to one person, one section of the town, North Branford. Northford does not have a town council sitting there and taking taxes from Northford residents. They pay North Branford. What are the Northford people? I heard one person from Northford speak. I don't know, but we have to generate for both sides of the town, surely. Either that, or we're not, we don't do anything. Does Northford say that we should beautify North Branford's side and not Northford's side? We could have a battle royal there. I have no idea, but I'd like to see the town beautified. I would like to develop the town, develop the land that I have. I'm not doing it until I know for certain that it's worthwhile. I don't want to build on the land that I have that is industrial and/or. I want to know that that land is going to be a successful business or a successful area to the town so that generates taxes. Taxes are what carries North Branford. Branford has a great tax base. They also have a great garden club, which beautifies the middle of their, we had a garden club. Unfortunately, it just folded up. We were trying, I was asking Bob Greagan and everything. Unfortunately, Bob became cancer. Anyway, we were trying to, I belong to a garden club. I belong to a part of New Haven, and I have belonged there for 49 years. So, I mean, I know what we do for beautification. So I'm thinking to myself, the time has come for North Branford residents to start working towards doing more for the town itself instead of sitting back and saying, oh, let the taxes go up. How many times have you heard from people say, oh, my taxes have gone up. They did it again. Well, guess what? You didn't go out to the town meeting and say anything about it. If you don't say anything, you don't expect results. So keep, keep in mind, we have to think of Northford as well. Thank you.
A comment and a question. First, I agree we need to take care of beautifying both Northford and North Branford. We certainly don't want to leave Northford out. But we don't want to leave North Branford out either. And as I said, we've been very successful with the vision of keeping Route 17 pristine and developing Route 80. But my question sort of piggybacks on Liz Kaplan's statement about if they fully develop the five acres, it would be worth, at the very best, $2.3 million and we could get taxes on it. My question to you is, what could we get if we fully develop the 200 acres that people are referring to up on 22 behind the police station? What would that bring in for revenue? Think about it. That's 200 acres.
First of all, I want to thank the council. I know, whatever you decide, this is a very, very difficult decision, and I believe that you've really tried to be thorough in listening to not only everyone here, but the charrettes that have gone on over the years. And I think there is a rarity when the council is able to exchange with the public, because at a meeting, you cannot, at your town council meetings, you cannot exchange with the public during that meeting. So if any of you tonight had questions for people that spoke in the audience, I personally would welcome it. And, you know, honestly, in defense of Counselor Arman, I know him very well, and I think he was genuinely trying to engage Mrs. Beaumont in how she felt. So that's, with that being said. And I would not like to see the 200 acres on, between Totucket and Route 22, developed. And whatever ends up happening with this property at 1599, it really is not going to break us. I understand that, and I can appreciate everybody's desire to keep it, most people that spoke tonight, as open space. But I will ask the council this. We need to invest in economic development, and I really hope at some point, we invest in an economic development coordinator and a grant writer, which will benefit many of the town's departments. And it's a part-time position, but other towns are eating our lunch, and that's just a fact. And they could possibly help businesses that do have empty spaces fill those spaces. And they, they work regionally, not just on the shoreline. And we need to really be creative with bringing revenue into our, into our community. So thank you.
I may be mistaken, but this council here is not going to vote on anything at all until after the election. Is that correct? I don't mean to ask it directly, but...
Right. That's correct.
Yeah, it's, it's a public hearing, so we can't.
Right. But what I'm trying to say is...
We have a fixed agenda.
It won't, this, this will not come up in front of the town council until the next council sits, correct?
Right.
After the election.
Yes.
So talking, some of you people, maybe all you people won't be here next time. You know what I mean? It could happen, right? Not all of you, but... So really, what is going to be accomplished tonight? Is this going to all be carried over to the new council?
It's in the record now. This, this, this meeting is actual record. So it's going to be in the record that a majority of people are in favor of selling the property.
And the new council will go on that premise?
We're hoping.
Okay. Thank you.
Go defense, that's still again. Last meeting we had, it was to develop a nice North Branford green along with a nice park there for people to walk around and things like that. Have a small, I'm going to say strip stores there with a little bit. Nothing crazy, but develop some taxes. I mean, isn't it time that we start to develop some property? I mean, maybe everybody in North Branford is rich and they don't care about their taxes, but basically, we need some tax breaks. And if you build another park there, then our public works has more work, maybe bring on more people, do this and that, more maintenance. So I don't know what you guys look at in this town, but basically, you guys got to look at, stop spending money. Our town just spends and spends and spends. And I see it. I've been in town for a long time. We spend money foolishly on a lot of things, which I can't talk about, but basically, it's things that you have to think about, what's happening in town. We are residents in town, and we need, not going to get a tax break forever, basically, because your taxes just keep going up. We live in a small town, and we don't get, we get a decent amount for our tax, but not as much as other towns. But I think we have to look at things. And open space, I mean, okay, park. At one time, they were talking about putting the town center where the police station is. They was thinking about taking the town hall, put it there. Well, why can't we make a little center there? Develop the center there, and that would be a little park and stuff there. And eventually, the town hall was talking about one time, selling that, and we're in the town hall where the police station was. That one thing works at one time, too. So that's the perfect place to have a town center, right in between the two towns. That's right on the boundary line. You can't say Northford and North Branford, because it is one town. You guys think Northford is better than North Branford, back and forth, but it is one town. And we all pay taxes in the same town. Thank you.
Trying to get my thoughts together. Northford is a borough of North Branford. Northford was formed historically after North Branford. It was the people of the north migrated over there. So this, I don't know where this deal with North being so great. We're one town, and the woman that was talking about all the parks, they want the same treatment for Northford and North Branford. Northford has had the top treatment. They sewed their damn property down 17 so that they didn't get, couldn't take a lot of development in the sewer. They undersized the pipe. Very smart, all right? We know it. Maybe you don't. But you undersized the pipe, now all of a sudden, you can't build on that road. You can't tie into it. So that keeps development down. Now they're looking for selling the ball field or the park down here for money. I mean, it's not making sense. You keep this park, and Northford has got all kinds of parks and ball fields on that end of town. We got nothing on this end. Yeah, North Farms Park, yeah, it's a, it's a field, it's a soccer field. It's got a little cabana, a little play yard for the kids. It's way out of whack from the center of town where the kids would be. And we need something in the center of town, on this end of town. It ain't beautifying North Branford anymore than it beautifying Northford. Let's get it straight.
So I'm Al Rose from 40 Valley Road, and I'm speaking as a citizen, because actually, I don't think we're councilors until after the election again. We don't meet again. So what I see there is, and I've even been called Captain Gazebo, I believe. I see a gazebo. I see a little New England-style park sitting there. I see sidewalks from Marshfield Apartments all the way back up to the elderly housing. And I, and I just, you know, it's probably my heritage. Me and my siblings, who are in town still, are 12th generation in town. So, you know, I apologize for my heritage and thinking that that piece of property should be that way. But I do want to talk to the economic development just a little bit for everybody that thinks we should do this to raise taxes. And these figures are available from our assessor. He's very happy to help, and he will tell you all exactly what I'm going to tell you. But I got these numbers from him. He handed them in. He handed this to us a few months back. So if he took the property and he put a value on it, and it's, right now, as the empty piece of land, it's valued at about $459,700. 70% of that tax dollars taxable would be $321,000, and it'd bring in $11,000 a year. If we found a developer who was going to develop this and did it to the nines, the best development using every square inch and putting in the businesses and putting in residential, he could come up with about $2,260,000 in value. Take 70% of that and you tax it, and he's down around $15,800, or $1,580,000. And the taxes they would generate are $53,000 a year after the fifth year of the, you know, the deferment from this developer. the deferment from this development. So these are the numbers, and I agree with Liz on that, because she had the same numbers. She actually met with him this afternoon. So what that means is, to the average taxpayer in town, $7.44 a year. The commercial property in town means $9.47 a year. But then I went a little bit further, and I looked at how he was developing it to come up with this number. He had 4,000 square feet of apartments. So we're gonna say that that's gonna turn into 1,300 square foot apartments, so we're gonna have four of them. Alls we need is four kids to live in these apartments, and at $15,000 a kid, that's $60,000 a year to educate them, and we just lost money by selling the park. That's all I have to say.
Any other statements, questions, desires? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing first.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The public hearing is closed. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.